By the hour.[5.12][5.12](laughter)
Yeah, if you all stand, I'll say grace. Dear heavenly Father, accept our thanks for this glorious day and all of its blessings. We ask for your guidance, strength, and wisdom in our deliberations this evening. Be be challenged to make this a better world and to always give our best. In your son's name, we ask this blessing. Amen.
The flag of the United States of America and due Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a quorum. Thank you, everybody, for coming. And planning update or announcements.
Thank you. On the planning update, I had noted that there was a tentative rezoning scheduled for April the 6th. It turns out that that one is not going to be ready to move forward, April the 6th, and so we do not have any items for that meeting if the Planning Commission would like to cancel that meeting.
We would like to, yes.[81.14][81.14](laughter)
What a question, huh?
All right. That's the only announcement.
We'll move on to the minutes. I presume everybody's had a chance to review. Any comments on the last minutes? If hearing no comment, yes, go ahead, Mike.
One thing, Nick. Did you or Ms. Carter call the meeting to order?
You did.
Yeah, that's the only thing I noticed in here.
I did not pick that up.
I didn't even notice that. I did last. Wait a minute.
Yeah.
What month?
January was when we elected.
Voted.
Voted, right.
Yeah, but I called the meeting to order.
In January.
In January.
Yes, ma'am.
And these are minutes for, I've got to look again.
February.
February.
The first meeting in February, Ms. Carter would have called the meeting to order after that.
Oh, that's when we did that.
It would have been Ms. Newhouse.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, okay.
I just saw that on the.
Okay.
I think missing a meeting has skewed our schedule a little bit, but I'll take a motion to approve.
You'll move.
Second. All right, proceed to vote. Are we ready? And it is unanimous. Moving on to our work session for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Doug Morgan and I are presenting a work session this evening, and we'd like some feedback on some of the ideas that we're going to talk about this evening. The work session is in response to concerns that have been raised by both the Planning Commission and then the Board, but also by citizens. We've been hearing comments through a number of recent rezonings about safety, the lack of sidewalks, cut-through traffic, narrow streets, the extension of existing streets to accommodate new development. And so we're looking at ways to try to address some of those concerns within our current What we wanted to talk about first was just give you a brief overview of our current regulations. The Virginia Department of Transportation takes into the state system most of the roads that the Planning Commission sees through rezoning. Private streets are permitted in some limited circumstances, and also within the mixed-use zoning district is probably where we will see the majority of those. But any road that is going to be a public road maintained by VDOT needs to comply with the secondary street acceptance requirements. And what those say is that a street addition is a one or more streets associated with a new subdivision. And that new subdivision road or roads need to provide access to an existing public road, and they also need to provide a second access to either a different public road or a stub to an adjacent parcel that would develop into the future. So that any subdivision ends up with ultimately two access points as long as that stub is developed. And then the larger the subdivision, the more access points are required. And then if you do have an existing stub that, for example, we saw most recently in the Spring Grove rezoning, Tri-Cord Spring Grove rezoning, there was a residential neighborhood that stubbed to the adjacent parcel, and Spring Grove was proposed to connect to that stub. So if that stub is constructed to the property line and under VDOT maintenance, then VDOT does require that that connection be made. The county requirements, I mentioned private roads, and the county does require that the private roads be built to VDOT standards. So we're looking at the same standard road, no matter whether it's private or public, but the maintenance ultimately comes to be the issue. For subdivisions that generate 2,000 or more vehicles per day, we do require a second access to an existing public road, or there is the ability to provide a divided entrance if a second entrance cannot be made, and you need to be able to justify that due to topography or site distance. There needs to be some sort of physical constraint. So when we're looking at 2,000 vehicles per day, that's a 200 single-family detached unit subdivision. We're looking at 10 vehicles per day for a detached unit subdivision. The streets will range in width, depending on the vehicle trips, between 18 and 24 feet for your typical subdivision street. And then we do have a sidewalk requirement for subdivisions with a minimum lot size of 25,000 square feet or less. Couple of the options that we've been talking about specifically related to the streets are to require that there be a main spine road through the subdivision, and that would be designed so that that is the through road that carries the traffic, and that's its intent. Another option we've been looking at is requiring that second connection to an existing road when you have a subdivision, that that traffic plus the new subdivision traffic results in more than 2,000 vehicles per day. And that would address the situation that we saw in Waverly Village. There was a certain point where all of the traffic needed to funnel to one street, so if you added the existing traffic with any new traffic, you would have exceeded the 2,000 vehicles per day. And then another idea just related to the sidewalk requirement is to lower the threshold requirement for when a sidewalk is required.
Would that be for all zones, all zone densities?
Well, it would be, I was going to talk about that a little bit more in terms of the specifics, but it wouldn't necessarily be for all zones because it's based on lot size, and lots, the 25,000 square foot lot size is not permitted in all zones. It's only permitted in the planned development housing, residential one, residential two, and mixed-use districts.
So the requirement for sidewalks would be based off the density?
Yeah, yes.
Wanda, I have one question.
Yes.
Go back to that, two clicks back. Do it again. Right there. The sidewalk required for subdivision with minimum lot size of 25,000 square feet or less?
Right, right. So the smaller lot subdivisions are the ones where sidewalks are required.
Oh, okay. I would think the other way around. Thank you.
Are we going to talk about private roads and they are later?
We can talk about them. I didn't specifically have them as a part of this presentation, but we can.
I have a question. I know, I'm sure everybody knows where Union Bank and Trust on Lafayette Boulevard is. There's a side road that it takes you back to where Ultimate.
Okay.
Has anybody traveled that road lately?
It's got a lot of potholes.
Well, we need to do something about it because they've got potholes big enough to put all of us in at one time. Yep. And they're parked on both sides of the road. It's really bad. By understanding it's owned by Union Bank and, well, not Union now, but whoever they sold it to, Ultimate, it's another company down on the right-hand side, then it's a lot there that's owned by a couple of D.C. or something. But they're not maintaining it, and it is terrible. It is bad. It needs to be condemned, and we need to cut it off. We need to do something about it.
What can we do?
As it being a private street. As it being a private street, it's part of their internal road network and their access to their driveways, their parking lot. So they do have to be in conformance with their site plan. Anytime that they're not in conformance with their site plan, then I work with the zoning office and notify them, and I've already taken note down.
Well, they haven't been in compliance for the last 15 years, so I thought I'd let you know.
Well, hopefully, we can get something.
And it's really a problem.
What do you call a complaint?
Paving it in accordance with what their approved site plan.
What about the parking issue that he was talking about?
I'm sorry?
He was talking about the parking, where people are parking on both sides of the road? They're parking on both. They have a, it's a rental company down on the right-hand side.
It is a commercial lot. I mean, they are, I would have to look at it. I'm not familiar with it off the top of my head, the private road. If it is a drive aisle, it's just like any other business. It is private property. So if they've shown that they're going to have parking on both sides or parking lot, or if it was part of Ultimate, that might be an overflow area, it would have to be defined on their site plan. If it's not clearly defined on their site plan, a lot of times, there's not much we can do.
Unless it's a fire lane, something like that.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, kind of follow-up with what the other two board members said. My suggestion is, and I know without looking, going back and digging, Doug, you're not going, you're going to need to look, but my suggestion, and it would suit Travis as well, and is to look back at the original site plans to see what it is and then provide a report back least to us so we understand what, if anything, can be done. Because until you go back to research that, to look at it, the meets and the boundaries of it, and what does it say on the site plan, it's just, we may or may not even have any purview over it. Well, but if we don't.
Excuse me, it may well predate those rules.
Yeah, that's, see, that's what I'm thinking.
Right, I caught you, yeah.
I think we need to go back, but to be fair, to give staff a chance to look at it, but at least provide a written report to us and find out that, because there's, that's not the only one like that. There's other ones in the county.
Absolutely.
And so if there's, and what we might want to do is, let's take that one as an example and to drill down to it and say, okay, there is some recourse that we have or something we can look at, and we'll decide that. And if not, then we'll decide what we need to do.
There's three that I'm working on right now that's in the same type of scenario that I had to pull the site plan on. The one that's beside the Giant that runs from Giant to Levels, that road back there, worked on that a couple of months ago, and they did do repairs. Sometimes it's just a matter of getting out there and making face value. Sometimes I, when I did that, I took the sheriff's deputies with me and went knocked on the door and asked for the general manager, advised them that these roads are supposed to be paved, they are private roads. A lot of times, they're not aware of it, especially the one behind Popeyes on 208. That one, Popeyes wasn't aware. They weren't aware that they needed to maintain that. So a lot of times, it's just a matter of advising them, bring them up to speed and inform them that it needs to be taken care of.
Isn't there a mechanism where the county can adopt, we'll take those roads where we can do enforcement on them?
We can.
Because we have done that.
We can do enforcement, that's what I'm telling you. We do.
Well, I mean, where they can do parking enforcement and things.
We can do parking enforcement when it is a public street, and they do get signage from Virginia Department of Transportation. If it's private, it's a little bit different.
But there is a mechanism, am I correct?
There is.
One other question on private, to go back to private roads. From your slide, was I correct in seeing that any new private roads need to be built to VDOT standards now?
That's our current standards, correct. That's already part of our ordinance now.
So we won't have, we already have that, so we don't have to worry about
No.
Someone building, buying on a gravel road and coming back and wanting us to take it into the state system. Okay.
All right, so just to dive down a little bit more deeply into these concepts, the first is the spine road. This is a road that is designed to carry traffic. No driveways would be permitted off of the spine road, or perhaps limited driveways would be permitted off the spine road, depending on the circumstance. And it would be designed to stub to that adjacent property, meeting the VDOT secondary street acceptance requirements. It would connect to the existing public street, it would carry the traffic through, and then it would stub to that adjacent property in conformance with those requirements. One of the questions, though, that we've struggled with is, should that road be designed, and should we assume that the traffic from that adjacent property that's yet to be developed, that may not be developed for 10 years, is at the buy-right level, which might be 10 units? Or that it might be rezoned in the future, in which case, we might look at the future land use map and see that, you know, it's designated for mixed use, and there's a potential for a lot more cars to be using that roadway. This is exactly the Spring Grove situation, where it was a small neighborhood that was originally developed, and they stubbed to the adjacent property with the assumption that there'd be 10 units developed by right in the future, but instead, a rezoning has been proposed for over 100 units. So that's one of the items that we've been struggling with, is what assumption should we put in the ordinance? Should there, should we put the onus on that original developer to design a road of the sufficient width to accommodate a high volume of traffic, assuming that a rezoning might ultimately be approved? Or should it be based on the buy-right development potential?
What do we have on the books for connecting? Connections that have to be.
Right now, we, there's just the requirement to make that connection to the adjacent undeveloped parcel, and right now, we just look at it as the buy-right scenario. So it'd be that low-level, 10-units addition to that road network if they were ultimately developed, would be the current scenario.
Wanda, what we talked about, the spine road, this is for new development?
This is for new development, yes.
So what you're suggesting is they have, like 208, go down through the middle of the subdivision?
And we actually have some examples.
So what would they, they would have to plan coming off of other streets?
Yes.
The houses would have to be laid out where nobody drives off the main road. That's a good idea.
Right. And here's some examples. On the screen in front of you right now is River Club. What you can see is Tidewater Trail at the bottom of the screen here. They actually have a divided entrance here coming in, and then the spine road continues back. And as you can see, all of these houses access off of side roads. They access off of these roads. None of these homes have a driveway connection to the main spine road. In this case, if you looked further on, this subdivision ends at the river, and they've got some larger lots at the back that actually do access. But at that point, there's very few cars using that main road. But down here, where you have the commercial and you have the other 100-plus homes, they're all using a, kind of the main drag that is purely to move traffic. This is another example. This is Idlewild in the city of Fredericksburg, and this is their main road through. And all of these homes.
Those are all sidewalks. There are a few that have them, but most of them all are a sidewalk connection. That sidewalk connection is the front, and they're accessed through alleys or private streets in the back.
So there are some limited pockets. Here's a pocket where the driveway access is the main road. But all of these homes on this side, while their sidewalk, their house faces the main road, they come in here and down this road to get to their garage. So this is somewhat of a mix. There are, you can see several pockets. Here's another one where there is direct access. But the majority of homes have no direct driveway connection to that main road through. And then even higher-level road would be Spotsylvania Parkway, where you actually have a parkway going through, and that would be appropriate for, like Jackson Village, the main road that would go through there to the bridge over I-95 and into Alexander's Crossing. A road like this would be appropriate at that level to move traffic. But these, the two prior examples are more at the neighborhood level.
Couple of thoughts I have on this is for the, let's call it the front development. If there's a, if there's a larger parcel in the back than in our comp plan, it's going to be developed and perhaps even to a higher density. I wouldn't expect the first developer to provide a roadway to accommodate something that may or may not be developed in the future. But what I would think is that we would have, because we're assuming it's going to be a public road, correct?
Correct.
We would have ownership of it, that at least the right-of-way is provided so that we don't have to deal with that issue. And we can, you know, I'm sure we have right-of-way standards, and then when that new development comes in, in behind, and say it's a higher-density rezoning or something like that, at that time, the improvements are made. And we've had a couple of cases recently where no spine road was provided. The one over here behind the Under Mountain is a good one because an existing development, small streets, and even though it was by right in behind, that was a heck of a lot of traffic that we were bringing through that existing subdivision, and the roads were substandard. And I struggle with, as a commission member, looking at rezoning packages where we take an awful lot of traffic and now dump it through an existing subdivision and impact the quality of life of those people living along that roadway. So I think we're going down the right, the right road, pardon the pun with this, but if there's a trigger based off the vehicles per day, future plan use, those types of things, as to what we need to do. The other thing that I'm becoming more and more opposed to are these stub roads into adjacent parcels. Aside from the life-safety issue of it, if an applicant's coming in with a development and rezoning to a much higher density, I'm really not in favor of these connector roads. And I'm not convinced, VDOT may want them, but I'm not convinced it's a requirement. I may be mistaken on that. But we had a recent case where that question came up, and I dug into it a little bit. And I'm not convinced that, VDOT may request it, but I don't believe it's a requirement. And moreover, as a commission member, I'm becoming more and more opposed to that because I just think it adversely impacts the quality of life of the people who are there before this, especially in rezoning. If we're talking by-right developments, that's one thing. But for rezoning, I struggle with these plans where we have to have those connectors because you know darn well people are going to be going through, even though we may have a connector road to a main artery or something like that. There's cut-throughs, there's all kinds of issues with these connector roads, and I struggle with it, to be honest with you. So you brought it up. I'd like to look at it even more. I'm just not, especially in cases where we have rezonings to a higher density, I struggle with it because I just don't think it's the right thing to do for the, for the original parcels, if I'm making any sense with that. Have you got more to do with your presentation on this, or?
Yes. Onto the next topic. Pretty much done with the spine road.
Are you going to talk about landscaping at all?
Uh, no. We weren't planning on.
Well, may I ask a question?
Certainly.
All right. He brought up a good point. So what do we have on the books? The reason that it's happening that a way, that we need to delete, so, or to need to try to fix it in some way so it won't continue to happen?
Well, I think what's happening, if I may.
I mean, we just need to talk about it, but if we don't get to the nitty-gritty of it and put down what has to be done, then it's, you know, we're just.
Right, and if I just may interject, again, I'm not convinced, VDOT's going to request it because I understand why they want to do it, and it's part of, it's part of their maintaining the roadways and snowplowing, and this, and I get it, this fire rescue and this police and all those issues. But I'm not convinced, and I would like to get clarity once and for all, if it's, if this is a law, if it's a regulation, or if it's just something VDOT desires when they're going to assume ownership of a road. And I don't know how, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, the only, I'm going back to Avalon Woods.
Avalon Woods is a great example.
All right. I'm going back to that. Now, if that was to come up, we have no way that we can prevent that from happening, that it would come through that subdivision with those small streets?
Right, as a, as a by-right.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I want to echo a little bit, which I agree with everything that you said, but I just want to elaborate on a couple of things. And one is, I know how VDOT operates, and Doug, you and I have dealt with them over the years, and they have what they want. But also, a lot of times, as Chairman Newhouse spoke, is show me in the state code or show me in the regulations where it is a requirement. So I think one of the things we put to bed is, if, show us where that is. So it is, in fact, a requirement. At the end of the day, VDOT is going to sign off on it, and they may or may not, whether it's a requirement or not. But I do think, I have the same concern that was voiced before, because what happens is twofold. One is, we have a by-right thing, and right now, we have a threshold of 2,000 vehicles per day or more when we're looking at Spring Grove. I can't remember what the number was on that. It was 1,000 something, I think.
Yeah, Spring Grove itself was under, yes.
Yeah, but the point is, there's two concerns I have. One is the stub-out roads that comes to bite us later on with a rezoning that is basically because they're increasing density. And secondly, the people that come in this room and stand up and say, "We were never told this." And that's another issue that we might want to look at, whether we can, in our own design standards or something, require, if you put a, if you put a stub-in road or something in your market house, either something as far as the signage or awareness, or if it's a deed, or something that has to be done, so people understand that, you know, one day later, you may have a road coming through that. Because, and I understand that, a lot of people don't look at that, and I know a lot of the people that are selling the lots and so forth, they're not going to go into detail and tell you, "Oh, look at those nice woods back here you'll have forever." So I think it's a combination of the VDOT requirement, being upfront with the existing residents or future residents, when they come, they know that, and I agree, the spine road is a great idea. But again, we have to be careful because, you know, it's always triggering that spine road is if you're going to have a density of a certain amount, why do you want to penalize the developer up front? And he's trying to do larger lots and not have that much density, which is better. So it's, I don't know, we need to walk carefully through it.
Well, as I was saying, I go back to Avalon Woods again. I want some, something that tells me, okay, it's by right, yes. And how can we prohibit from impacting the citizens who live on those streets like Avalon Wood has and Waverly Village? How do we stop that? What can we do? Nothing?
Well, the second item, the cumulative traffic
Yeah.
item, is the one that's meant to address existing situations where you have a subdivision proposed that attaches on to the back end of a road network that's already existing. The spine road works well for brand-new development, but it doesn't work, it doesn't do anything for the situation at Avalon Woods. But this next item, we're going to talk about the cumulative, looking at the cumulative traffic, would have an impact there.
I was just wondering, we talked about this thing. Is there some kind of way that we can preset this thing? That a guy builds a subdivision here, and of course, he's got a stub out in the back, that we can actually say that only so many cars can come down this street, and then whatever takes place in the future must have its own entrances? Is there some kind of way we can write that into an ordinance? Because this Avalon thing, they keep stacking up, stacking up, stacking up. The traffic in there now is way beyond the streets that are handling it. the streets that are handling it. It's a terrible situation.
I think that this cumulative traffic gets at that point.
And it's easy to come to it, too.
Yeah. And, but before we get to that, if I could just address a couple of items. When we do have a street stub, we do have a requirement for a sign to be put up that says future street extension potential, something along those lines. And, um, in the secondary street acceptance requirements, um, there is a provision in there that if the locality approves a plat that does not meet the secondary street acceptance requirements, um, that VDOT can refuse to take those streets into the state system, at which point I, the locality might then be liable for the maintenance of those streets. But we can certainly provide you with more specifics on those regulations and...
Wanda, question on the signs. So, so when I was doing a little research for Spring Grove, I drove back to Little Neighborhood and sure enough, the signs there. Um, drove Breckenridge. It's all by right what's going on there, but there's signs there. See, other places where that sign is there. Do we make it a point to verify that those signs are up? Do we check those signs? Or is that something where, well, it was there, but now it's gone because somebody ran over it with a car?
Correct. We do, and we do make sure that they're in place and they do get that final approval before their bonds are released and before they're accepted into VDOT's state system. So yes, they are checked and they are, that's why there are some there. But it's like anything, we don't, we are not proactively out there searching for signs. So, once we are notified, like the pothole situation, we're not out there proactively. But once I know about those potholes or once I know about a sign, then yes, we do make sure those signs get put back up.
All right. Um, flur-, okay. So, to address the cumulative traffic concept a little bit more, um, the concept here is that we would identify that pinch point in an existing subdivision where beyond that, all the traffic is funneled to one road in order to get out. Um, so, we would look at that pinch point, count the houses that are all funneling to that one road that are existing. And then we would look at the new subdivision and the number of houses that are proposed in there. And if the cumulative, um, amount exceeds 2,000 vehicles per day, then we would require that they provide a second entrance to an existing road. Um, one thing to consider there is that this would most likely end up being within Article Five of the subdivision ordinance, and the planning commission has the authority to grant exceptions to that. Um, so, one thing I wanted to talk a little bit about is the fact that, that this is a, a good idea, but it's not going to work in every situation. And just to show you an example, uh, this is a hypothetical scenario. I just used, um, River Club again because visually it worked, even though they don't have that many units in here. But here's a hypothetical situation. Um, here's Tidewater Trail, here's the main spine road in. And let's just say that the lots that are all funneling to this one pinch point right here, every single one of these lots has to pass this one pinch point in order to get out, is at 1,950. And then a developer came in and wanted to develop this parcel back here with 10 more lots. So that's going to push them over the 2,000 by 50 lots. Right? Right. And, yeah.
2,050.
But, and so, um, this parcel back here is surrounded by lots. There is no ability for them to provide another access road. So what do we do in this situation? Is, is this a situation that where, where a, uh, an exception could be granted?
Or just allow that new developer only the amount of houses that would put him, put you to quota. He's just being stigmatized.
Oh, to put it to 2,000 and no more?
If he can't, he can't have 10 houses, he can have eight or five or whatever.
Or five, yeah.
Bring it up to level, no matter what his situation is because of this pinch point.
In, in this particular example, I would even be fine if it's a by-right development. I would be fine with that regardless of if it's 2,000, 20, or 30. To me, what I struggle with is if a developer came in and wanted to put 200 townhomes in there.
Avalon Woods was a by-right development.
Right.
So, what's the difference?
But, but, well, that, yeah, that is a, yeah.
See, it gets a little bit more complicated once you start to look at this.
Avalon is a, is a special little-
Yeah. But in some ways, this is a very similar situation.
But, but in this particular case, I would presume that a, you know, I'm assuming fr-, from my perspective, that when an applicant comes before the commission with a rezoning package to a much higher density is the issue to me. If they came in and, and it was by right, and yes, they went over the 2,000, but it's, you know, it's within reason and you, you define that, I'm okay with that, really. But if, it, it, to me, the issue comes in where somebody comes in with a much higher development density-
That's right.
-is, is really where I think we need to focus and it-
Yeah. And, and I think with any, you know, we've kind of thrown out here some of the basic concepts, but what we really need to do is, is add in, what are those triggers?
And, yes, I would agree with that. And the other issue you just brought up is it needs flexibility because there's, this is not a cookie cutter situation. We need flexibility to make good judgment decisions built into whatever we do here because it, they're all different and we know that.
So, Ms. Chairman-
Yes, sir.
To follow up on this exception thing, because you, you have to be careful with exceptions, but there, there should be some flexibility. But right now, the one you showed, the example, so let's say they could do 10. So, if the by right was for 10 lots, they could do it anyway, but what would trigger it would be those 2,000 vehicles per day at the pinch point.
Right.
So that's what would catch them.
Right.
And then what the exception would be, that the planning commission would have the ability, okay, well, they're by right, so it's, it's only two lots threw them over. It may be not the end of the world. So you could grant it if you chose to do it, or you could stay firm, it is what it is. But I guess then, then the problem that you have and the commission is faced with it is developers saying, "We, we want to..." So when they come in, they would want, maybe come in by right, but because they triggered that, then they'd be grant, asking the planning commission for an exception for additional lots. But not an exception in the sense of a denser zoning. It's, it's two different animals there.
Absolutely. Doug, I agree. I mean, I agree, because what happens, you get one guy comes in, he's only two lots over, and then you know, the other guy's three lots over. Yeah, where, where do you stop at? And then, and then legally?
Yeah, but how do, how do we square that out?
I think there's a legal issue there.
And that's, that's how our whole transportation issue is right now.
I'm like Mr. Smith. I believe it's a legal issue there, too.
You know, that's, that's how we've gotten to our transportation nightmares as we are, is because we're developing and our roads are at capacity. So are we letting the next development come in having to pay for our, you know, two decades of, of deficient roads over capacity? So here's what we're trying to do, is trying to make sure that we're sufficient and making sure that there's enough room and there's enough capacity for safe movement of vehicles. So we don't have the cut-throughs. We don't have the other parcels or other developments essentially cutting through an internal neighborhood.
Go back to Mr. Smith's question. Legally, he said. Okay. What does VDOT say? Well, you can do that.
Well, in 2008, it was presented. I know in 2011, it is part of the, the code, Virginia code, um, and the new 2011 SSR standards. And they have been pretty firm on this with all of our subdivisions. So we've been applying this standard since 2011. But we're, we're trying to find a, a way to make it better.
And, and VDOT, in their secondary street acceptance requirements, they do have the ability to apply for modifications to them. The developer needs to apply to VDOT and, and they have certain, um, standards that, that they go by. And in this situation that I was using up on the screen, that may qualify, um, in terms of not having to provide a stub-out to an adjacent parcel because every single parcel around them is a residential-
Right.
-house. So there's no undeveloped land. So, so in that case, um, I don't believe that they would need to provide a stub. Um, and, and the big question here is just, you know, do they need to provide, under what would, are proposed to be our standards, a second connection to an existing road? That would be above and beyond VDOT's standards is what we're considering.
Are there other municipalities or, or counties or whatnot that have these types of standards that we could gain some experience from?
I've researched it. And, um, when you guys brought it forward, um, for us to look at something like this, um, I started looking at other localities and, and we're pretty much cutting edge.
Yeah.
Well, I can't, I can't believe none of the Northern Virginia localities have faced us.
They require the secondary street connections, just like every other locality in the Commonwealth of Virginia, when the secondary street's getting accepted by VDOT. But they're not requiring it to be a, a nice spine road. They can actually cut through developments. You're seeing more and more where people don't want that traffic right on their home, right in their driveway, right in their front yard. So you're seeing more and more in those as you go up 17 to 29. If you go through Centerville, if you get into Arlington, you'll see where they have developed these. And you see in our locality where we have rezonings, that they do exactly that. They actually have a spine road and they're developing it so that it's more advantageous for a purchaser because they don't want all the traffic in their front yard. So now, if you have a by right that comes in, we have nothing to capture that. This would give us that mechanism to say, "You're going to construct" so that we don't have that cut-through traffic to minimize the amount of traffic and quality of life for those residents.
Onto sidewalks. Um, we've, we've heard quite a few complaints from citizens about the fact that their neighborhoods lack sidewalks and, and people walk in the streets, the children play in the streets. Um, so, the obvious solution there is to require sidewalks in more circumstances. Um, we had a work session with the planning commission, um, last year at some point, talking a little bit about sidewalks. And one of the proposals that came up was to not base the requirement for sidewalks on a minimum lot size, but on a lot width. So if, if a lot was, you know, 200 feet or less, or the majority of lots within a subdivision were, say, 200 feet or less, a sidewalk would be a requirement within that subdivision. Um, another thing we could look at is, is, um, sidewalks on one side of a street requirement in more circumstances than they are now. Um, that would add more cost to the developer as they're developing it, but it would provide that safety and, and it would, um, of course, be half the cost if they were required to put it on both sides of the street. Um, and then, you know, we could also look, more and more, we're seeing subdivisions with trails proposed, um, an alternative pedestrian route to walking along the side of the street. So, uh, we could also look at, um, some sort of standard that takes into consideration trails, um, as well as sidewalks to ensure there's some sort of safe pedestrian access throughout the community.
That, um, and again, I just want to be sure, that is for lots less than 25,000 square feet?
Right now, the way our ordinance is written, it's 25,000 square fo-, feet or less for the lots. Um, and we do, we need to better define the way it is in the ordinance right now because you could have a subdivision that has 10 lots that are 25,000 square feet, um, 10 lots that are 50,000 square feet, and 10 lots that are, you know, something larger. And so we, right now, it's just defined as subdivisions with a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, 25,000 square feet and less. So, um, it, it, it gets difficult in terms of, of how, at, at which threshold we need to require it. If the majority of lots in the subdivision are greater, but there are some that are less, do we require sidewalks or not? And the other thing we are seeing, quite frankly, is that developers will come in with all of their lots at just over 25,000 square feet-
Right.
... so they can avoid the cost of putting sidewalks in.
Yep. Um, do family subdivisions come into play here? Do we have-
No.
They're all over the-
Right. Yeah. And they wouldn't need to comply with these standards at all.
Yes, sir.
Um, Wanda, you guys, this is just beginning of a work session. You're going to come back.
Yes, we're just looking for feedback, thoughts.
Something might be helpful, at least I know, uh, for me, would be maybe some type of a matrix with some examples of some of the things that you've laid out with some options on sidewalks and, and things of that nature, where you, we could maybe look at it and you could do a hypothetical, here's a subdivision with X number of lots, this would it would look like, the cost of that versus the cost of something else, the safety factors, but whatever the range of parameters and, and put it like in a matrix so we can kind of look at it. And then the concerns, like you said, you know, we, we've got it at 20, 25,000 and we did the same subdivision and we did it on lot width, this is, this is the, the results of it, or something of that nature so that-
Sure.
Yeah.
All right. So, just to sum up, um, these are some options. I, I think the spine road works very well for new subdivisions, um, development in new areas of the county, whereas the, the cumulative approach works better when you're, um, adding a subdivision onto the back of another subdivision. Um, but neither of them are going to address every single situation and every single concern. Um, and as we talked about, we need to ensure that we have clear standards for any exceptions that the planning commission might grant. Um, and then just, uh, the cost of development, uh, the spine road most likely will add to the cost of development by not being able to have so, uh, driveways off of that main road through. They are going to probably have to build a few more feet of road in order to, um, have a spine road with driveways off of, um, side roads. Uh, so, that, that is something that as we move forward with, we, we might hear about that from the development community.
Yeah, for, for 2,000 vehicles per day or greater. And if you, what is it, 10 vehicles per day per household, you're talking 200 lots, right?
Right.
So, you know, that, the cost of a spine road would be somewhat mitigated. And looking through, um, going, going back to some of the applications we've had for rezoning, and I get back to that, where if a spine road was in existence, the rezonings make a heck of a lot more sense.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, uh, unless there are any other comments on this, I-
Mr. Chairman, just, just on the spine road, I would like to, and you maybe you've already talked to the fire chief, but I would think from a public safety, um, that this would be better for them getting fire trucks in and out of these subdivisions. But certainly, I, I'd like to hear from him to see what he has to say about that.
Yeah. And that's a, that's a great point as well. Um, I did ask about landscaping requirements. Um, and I, it was probably a year ago this time when I brought it up once before, not only just with subdivision streets, but our, you know, our overall landscaping plan that we have. We have some very dangerous intersections where due to landscaping that blocks the line of sight. And, uh, I would just like, as a general statement, for us to relook at that, especially when we get into site distances. Um, I went through one today where you had to sneak out there to, to see any oncoming traffic. So, um, so I just, as a general statement, if we could look at that, especially as it pertains to site distances or stopping distances, to look at our landscaping requirements. I'm all for big, you know, for the beautiful landscaping and our standards are great. It's just, I'm seeing an issue more and more with, it's a safety issue with, with site distances. So.
And speaking of that, a lot of times, it's, there's one over in Chancellor that I'm thinking about, that, uh, it is not, it's the lack of landscaping, actually. They've got a real sharp curve, 90-degree curve, and the owners on the, in the inside of the curve have got a fence there and have let it all grow all the way up, but eight feet tall and it's all trash. It's just honeysuckle and you can't see around that curve. And there's a lot of traffic on that road. I apologize for my phone. I'm about to be a granddaddy here a third time.
Oh.
But I'm wa-, I'm waiting for a phone call.
[laughing]
And I, I don't want to miss it.
As long as his name is Greg, we're fine with that.
Nope.
No, it's the third girl.
Oh, there you go. Well, that's, that, you, you pay attention to visiting, that's perfectly fine. Yeah.
I know.
What else do you have, Wanda?
All right. Well, what we'll do is we'll go back, uh, take your comments and, and we'll work on some triggers, um, address the questions that came up, provide you with that information that you've requested, um, and then come back again.
Well, I-
Mr. Chair-
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
One question. Do, do we have, and I'm sure we do, in some way, we could have that information as well. I'd love to know what are one, what zone by right uses, what pieces of land are out there, how many there are roughly, that would fall under this 2,000 trip, you know, fall over. Hey, potentially, this whole plot of land can develop 250 homes by right if someone were to come in. Just kind of curious if there's even that many pieces of property out there.
Right, right. There are not of that size, but I, I do have the information. We recently did a analysis within the primary development boundary of vacant parcels. So I can pull that together pretty quickly.
Yeah. We, we actually, what was it, 3,000 acres we added a few years ago?
Right.
Right, right.
That's, that's a lot of land, any packable- That's a lot of land that can pack, a lot of houses on that.
Yeah. And that's a good point, that while there may be on an individual parcel, it may not be able to achieve that high of a density, but we have areas where there are multiple vacant parcels together that somebody could put together an assemblage of parcels and develop a very large subdivision by right.
Wanda, is it, do we have, I know we have built it, I just don't know if we've ever done it. Do we have the ability to be able to take the current primary development area and then do what's out there, we know that's by right, that's out there or what's on the books, and David be able to produce a map that would be of size where we could at least see where those pockets are and what they are? So it wouldn't be just a narrative, but we'd be able to look on a map and be able to actually see where those pockets and what that might be.
I think we can do that.
Yeah, I know we do it. I didn't know if we already had it or something. At least it would be a good tool for us as something as we're kind of thinking about some of these things in these areas. Because for me, it's a little bit better if I can think, oh, I know where that is. I know what's there, so.
Yeah, I think we may actually have something in a map form that would address that. So I'll just need to go review it and double check.
Yeah, that's, that's great stuff. I'm really happy to hear that we're looking at that and, you know, whatever assistance you need from the commission, I'm sure we'd be happy to meet with you and we'll afford to hearing more on this. Anything else on that, Wanda?
Not on the streets, no.
Are we ready to jump into the new proffer law?
Yes.
I just want to say real quick, if you know of any other potholes or if you have side streets, I'm serious, let me know right away because I can get on those. And I don't know about them unless I'm informed.
You going by tomorrow to check the one I...
I am.
Thank you.
I'm going to ride by there right now tonight.
Oh, no, you don't want to.
Don't go by the Nike's, you'll never get out of there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
So a new law was passed that's going to become part of the Code of Virginia effective July 1st of this year. And it's going to change pretty significantly the way we approach proffers. The law was just passed and we're trying to read through it and understand it. I sent a legal opinion over today that's got about a page and a half worth of questions that Carl may end up having to review and address. But I just wanted to make you aware of it and provide you with the actual language. It appears that such things as libraries, general government are no longer going to be public facilities that we're able to accept cash for in the future. And then there are going to be some restrictions related to what we can accept and under what circumstances we can accept cash and other proffers related to the specific proffer categories that are defined in the law. In the law, it's limited to transportation, public safety facilities, public schools, and public parks. So I just wanted to get this before you, make you aware of it, and just let you know you're going to hear a lot more about this over the next few months. We will have to amend our proffer policy. We may need to amend our code related to proffers as well.
I don't understand it. How are we going to understand it?
Oh, we'll understand it, but just not tonight.
I have one question. Does it lead us up to the potential of having a whole lot of taxpayers' money to be invested in some of these projects?
Yes.
Definitely.
The ability to collect proffers is going to be limited after July 1st. And just if I could make one more point, just to let you know, it's effective for any rezoning that includes residential and that's filed July 1st or after. We do have six rezonings that are in process right now, and those developers are starting to ask us questions about what we're going to do. And so we may not see any rezoning applications until after July 1st.
Okay.
It's a problem now because we can't, can't ask them for the money we need in order to pay for the development. I mean, there's roads and there's traffic signs, there's all kinds of issues, and we can't ask for any of that now. It's just going to complicate.
Ms. Chairman, one of the things, you know, I want to point out to the commission is when the budgets are designed, one of the things that we do is especially when it comes to capital projects and financing, issuing bond debt, proffer is the first thing we go after because that means I don't have to borrow, we don't have to borrow as much money, we don't have to borrow as much money, I don't have as much debt service. So that's a, it's a big hit. And following up with that, and I don't know, I'm not familiar with the, I haven't done my homework as far as reading what the new law says, and I trust my attorney over here probably knows it far better than I do, but in terms of public safety, that's a big issue because public safety, you understand, you're replacing a tower truck for a million dollars and some of these, these pumpers and things like that, one of the things that, you know, so that could be a big issue in terms of our CIP because as far as I can remember, we're on a turnover, Howard, just like when you assure if you own a scrap, but also in ambulances and fire trucks and all that stuff, not to mention if we have to build a new station or whatever. So I, one of the things that might be good for us too and maybe in a future agenda is be able to at least like bring fire chief in. I'd like to hear a little bit about what his needs and stuff are as we kind of get into that. So that's something that would be good. I'd like to hear where we're at now and, you know, what kind of stress is putting on the services that we're providing, especially when we're talking about, you know, not just the street things that we're looking at, but also especially in regard to the CIP.
Mr. Chairman, well, Wanda, what are they trying to drive us to, impact fees?
The only impact fee that we're authorized for is transportation at this point in time. So there would need to be more changes to the state code in order for, there would need to be more changes adopted to the state code to allow us to move 100% towards impact fees. Right now, even if the county wanted to move forward with impact fees, transportation is the only category that we're eligible for.
Okay. If a developer comes in and the impact that they, that rezoning would have, does it have to be directly in the project or can it be that it can be accepted outside of the project that that development's going to affect?
There are terms in here such as, they define an unreasonable proffer, and it says no locality shall request or accept an unreasonable proffer. So even if a developer wanted to proffer something to the county that would be unreasonable according to this law...
What's unreasonable?
We may not be able to accept it.
Does it say what's unreasonable?
Yeah, it's...
Who carried this bill?
They, they define an unreasonable proffer in there and it says, unless it addresses an impact to an off-site public facility such that the new residential development or new residential use actually creates that need or an identifiable portion of a need for one or more public facility improvements, so brick and mortar, in excess of existing public facility capacity at the time of the rezoning. And each such new residential development or new residential use actually must receive a direct and material benefit. So it's very strict standards as to how you get that off-site improvement in a proffer. And what do those things mean exactly? You know, we're going to try to work on providing that type of interpretation to, you know, guide our proffer policies, et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, at the end of the day, it's probably going to be tried at some point. There's going to be some case law, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And I don't know who, let me see if it's on here, who sponsored the bill, but it passed with a pretty, pretty good majority. And it was obviously carried by, you know, home builders.
So Doug, you're probably right. In the future, if you need a new fire truck, we're going to have to ask the taxpayers to foot that bill now.
Your CIP and look at all the ambulance, fire, I mean, all the, I mean, stuff like that. And that's basically on wearing out and plus you're getting new growth in the thing and the taxpayers of this county will have to pay for it.
That, I think whoever sponsored the bill has never been on a board of supervisors. He's never been an elected official in this category, on the local level, to know what we have to deal with.
That's the same old thing Mary Leah passing the buck back down locally.
That's right.
It's been going on for years.
Yeah, and it's getting worse though.
We have 11 fire stations. Now, I'm not sure why we, but we might have to expand or we might have to, Paul's saying this, it's brick and mortar. All the other stuff that we have in is brick and mortar. That's not fair game, those are, you know, millions of dollars.
It would be, it would be beneficial to hear from, from the fire chief and from the sheriff on capital improvements on how this is going to affect them. It really would because, I mean, that's, that's a lot of money there. Like I said, you're talking a lot of money for a fire truck.
I certainly would like to know who sponsored the bill. I would like to contact them and see that reasoning behind this. I mean, what can they give us as a positive input on this, you know? I really would like to know who did sponsor the bills so that we can ask, what's the benefit to the local government? What's the benefit to the taxpayers that vote you in, that you represent? You know, you're putting them down, really. I would like to know that. Well, that's what I'm saying. That's exactly right. And they should.
Anything else, Wanda?
No, so obviously we'll be talking about that one quite a bit more in the future.
Any other comment tonight?
I think, I think it's a great idea.
Well, listen who it is first.
Yes, who they are. I heard that he did.
If we don't have any other comments, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I...
I think it was a consensus. It was just a consensus.
Chairman discretion?
I think there's a general consensus to direct, yeah, Ms. Paris, to make sure that that's removed from the schedule and, you know, all pertinent notices if there are any.
Just great work tonight. That's all good information and it's good stuff, so I appreciate it. At this point, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Okay, very good. See to vote. And I'm betray a guess, it's unanimous it is. Have a great evening.